Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 17th, 2017. I would ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in the heart of the summer season, we are ever mindful of the many blessings and issues that can be presented to us as we try to govern our community. Certainly, the height of the Fox River, not only in Batavia, but certainly in some of our surrounding communities where more imminent danger is prevalent, certainly reminds us of the dangers and the watchwords you have to profess to have as the Fox River runs through your community, but it also, I think, speaks to the splendor and the beauty of nature and it's all of its appearances that bless our community with that river throughout the year. So, we just ask for a blessing upon all those tonight throughout our region and throughout the state of Illinois and Wisconsin who are dealing with this issue, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on all of them as they go about their vital mission. As always tonight, we also want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on them and all those serving with them so that they can successfully accomplish their mission and return to our country in safety. As always, we ask for direction and understanding as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing full well that each member of the city council in their own hearts and minds has the very best interests of our community at stake. So, we ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Alderman Er, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? McFadden.
So, we are missing two, two tonight, so we have 12 members present, so we have the necessary quorum to get into business, and we will move forward. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack, do you have this?
I'm not aware of any this evening.
The only thing I am aware, I was told earlier, is that item number 10, which is the presentation by Elder Daycare Center, is not going to take place tonight. Am I correct in that? They had some issues come up, but they're going to maybe be at our next meeting or sometime very near in their future. Okay. I guess we do the recognitions and the appointment before we do the consent agenda. That's new. At this time, I'd like to appoint to the paid-on-call Fire Department Lindsey Ferguson, and I'd ask for a motion of confirmation.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Chief Dyke, do you have any comments to make?
I do. This is Lindsey Ferguson. She's going to be a no-paid-on-call. She is one of our contract paramedics at Station One. She lives in Geneva. She's a basic operations firefighter, certified in that, and she also has an associate's degree in fire science, so we're very excited to have her on our department.
Lindsey, you want to turn me up there in the center of the room so we can get you on TV here? Why don't you stand over here, face me this way, because we're trying to play to this camera right here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm Lindsey Ferguson.
I'm Lindsey Ferguson.
Have you been appointed to the position of paid-on-call recruit?
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the county of Kane and DuPage.
And I swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. You want to do a recognition now of Battalion Chief John Lucas?
I do. John, if you can come up here, please. Batavia Fire Department would like to recognize Battalion Chief John Lucas for obtaining the Chief Fire Officer Certificate. The certification is the highest level of officer certification in the state of Illinois. It is a year-long process where they are evaluated by other chief officers based upon their professional experience and their technical competencies in the areas of leadership, communications, personal and professional development, community and intergovernmental relations, human resources, legal issues, strategic planning, emergency management, code enforcement, public education, budgeting, financial issues, and life safety initiatives. So, John, on behalf of the city and on behalf of the Batavia Fire Department, congratulations.
All right, we will move then to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Atack?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for May 30th, June 6th, and June 13th, 2017. June 2017 building report, 2016 comprehensive annual financial report, 2016 police and fire pension audits. Approvals, July 14th, 2017 payroll in the amount of $816,433.12. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,622,211.5. City council minutes for July 5th, 2017. Ordinance 17-52 annexing 502 Roberts Lane. Resolution 17-81 authorized budget amendment for electric utilities in the amount of $176,250. Resolution 17-84-R authorizing a three-year contract with associated technical services for the 2017 to 2019 year valve exercising and condition assessment program in the amount of $74,100. Resolution 17-80-R, a resolution awarding a grant under the facade grant program within the downtown historic district applicant David Anderson at 2015 East Wilson Street. I move we accept the consent agenda and approve it as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Er for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item number eight, where matters from the public for items not on tonight's agenda, does anybody wish to address this this evening? Okay, moving then to nine, which is going to be postponed to another meeting, and so we will move then to 10, or, yeah.
Nine.
Nine, okay, I'm sorry. Main Street. Jody.
All right. So, I just wanted to quickly run over a couple things that I'm sure a lot of you guys have participated in in the recent last two months. So, Downtown Egg Hop, Well Batavia, Race to Market 5K, Batavia Farmer's Market, and Two Second Fridays in downtown since April, actually. That is an estimated 15,000 people that we've brought down just since April, so the weather's finally started to get great. Lots of people down here, just in general, watching people out the windows, riding their bikes, but just for our events that we've hosted since April, 15,000 people coming into downtown, and we've got, you know, 40,000 more that we're going to be bringing down for the rest of the summer, if not more. So, add that with 122 volunteers donating about 350 hours between those spring and early summer events, and that is just a small piece of what we're doing down here with Batavia Main Street and the downtown community. So, I thought that was kind of cool when I was thinking about it today, as we're coming up on Cocktails in the Park. Once Kathy and I and our volunteer team and our board team and all the attendees at Cocktails in the Park finish up Saturday night, clean up Sunday morning and Monday morning, and, you know, for the next couple days, you know, we've already accomplished, what is that, six or seven events, and we do still have quite a few coming, you know, down in the season, but it just brings a lot of life into our downtown, and it's super exciting. And as I walked around today passing out tickets that you guys had requested, it's really cool to get that support from you guys, too, to see that, you know, a good majority of the people around this table and in this room are going to be in attendance on Saturday, which is our big fundraiser. So, for those of you who don't know, Cocktails in the Park is this Saturday, July 22nd, from 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM in the park just to the east of this building here, what I lovingly call it Appleton Park. It's an evening with music and food and drinks and hanging out with 400 to 500 of your closest friends from Batavia. There are some people from other communities that come, too, but this is a true showing of a lot of Batavians who want to support the downtown. We aim to raise about $15,000 every year, if not more, and each year that goes up a little bit by the generous support from our community. So, we hope to do that again this year. Tickets are still available online at downtownbatavia.com, so you can buy a $25 entry ticket pre-sale, they go up to $30 the day of, or you can buy the $50 entry plus raffle ticket, which gets you a entry into the park and then a 1 in 200 chance to win $2,500. So, lots of different options to help support your downtown community just through this one event. A quick special thank you to our presenting sponsors, Boyce Body Works and Gerald Subaru, as well as a big thank you to the city of Batavia, because you guys allow us to use the space, you guys help us with all the rules and making sure the event comes out without a hitch, and like I said, all the support from you guys, actually in attendance, staff, council members, you know, just really everybody. We couldn't do it without the support from the city, so that's really awesome. And then following that, on August 6th, Main Street kind of jumped on the bandwagon of the community dinner table. So, last year, myself, I helped out, but we brought it under our umbrella for this year, and we are going to host 200 people on River Street for the community dinner table. We sold out of the first batch of 150 tickets in less than five days, which was really exciting, because we increased the ticket price and people still wanted to join. So, that was cool, that people wanted to sit on one long table in the middle of River Street and eat dinner together on a Sunday afternoon, Sunday evening. So, all the food for that event is purchased through Batavia Farmer's Market farms and vendors, so Katic Bread, Burgers Meats, Stamper Cheeses, so all your favorite Farmer's Market vendors on Saturday, all of our local farms and different farmers and vendors and producers will actually be providing the ingredients for that night. And then, we are bringing those ingredients to the River Street restaurants, so they'll prepare the meal for us. So, it's a collaboration of businesses who are brick and mortar here in Batavia and then businesses who pop up on Saturday mornings, which is really another cool collaboration we have on the streets. We will be releasing a very small bunch of tickets on, I think it's July 24th, if that's the Monday. We'll be posting it and put it in our e-news and everything like that, but very small, 20 maybe, so just be paying attention. It'll go onto the Eventbrite where you purchased the tickets before. So, if you still know people who didn't get tickets and are interested, make sure to tell them to pay attention starting next week, beginning of next week to do that. So, with that event, last year, just around $1,200 was raised for the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. Now, it was just what was left over from the ticket sales, and this year, we've tried to increase that a little bit more, so we're going to do the same thing where anything after cost goes to the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, and we think it'll be at least double that, which is really cool to help them out with their budget for this year. And Betsy will actually be down at the event speaking, letting people know how much it will help them to reach their goals for feeding the people in our community. We also just want to mention that Aldi, our regional Aldi, has stepped up as the presenting sponsor for the event this year. So, really great collaboration with them. We've tried for a long time to get them to come onboard with some of our programming, and this one really spoke to them. So, they're going to have a representative down at the event also talking about how they are starting to work more locally. They're going to bring some samples of their products for all of our attendees, have a little goodie bag and all of that, so that's been a good partnership as well. The Farmer's Market, I think I see almost all of you at that every week, so thank you for saving your grocery shopping till Saturday morning on River Street. We're in full swing. Fruit is at the market, veggies, including tomatoes, are at the market, so calm down. I mean, corn's not here yet, but maybe this week? This week, it's official. You hear it first. Corn is at the market. So, that really means that we've hit the whole gamut for the Farmer's Market. Lots and lots of vendors. Last week, we had the Artisan Collective join us, so the third Saturday of every month, the Artisan Collective comes down, adds some flair to the market, extra shopping. We counted, we did a count two weeks ago, and we dotted about 1,600 people, figure we missed a couple hundred, so we're hitting those 2,000 people down there now, because it's increased. Last week was, if you were down there at all, it was packed the entire time. So, it's great to see that again, everybody back on River Street on Saturday mornings. Finally, we have a new promotion that we're doing, and it was the second, Second Friday this past Friday, so that we're doing in collaboration with Water Street Studios and some of the downtown businesses. So, it's not a big festival, we're not having live music at the pavilion or anything, we're just encouraging the downtown businesses to extend their hours on the Second Friday from 6:00 until 9:00, and to have something going on inside their space to welcome people in. So, the depots hopped onboard, they're hosting different events, different shows, welcoming guests on Friday nights, so people who don't normally get to attend during the regular hours are able to check out the depot and other locations during that time. So, we look forward to having the next one on August 11th, so make sure you come down, check out Water Street Studios show, we have the maps over there, and then continue around town to the other locations. One more thing, if you saw on social media the week of the 4th of July, our poor downtown Batavia sign was damaged, and it wreaked havoc on Facebook, which was kind of fun. We did find it in the river. Laura let me know that somebody spotted it, and me and my husband and the kids went down and fished it out, and our city, our streets guys made new signs for us. So, we will be rebuilding the sign, which is awesome. They, that was really cool. They walked into our, I saw them coming down the stairs by our office, if you know where our office is, we're right on the side of the bridge on the lower level, so you see them walking down the stairs with our new Batavia Main Street signs, and it was very, it was a sweet moment, and of course, I took a picture of it and put it on social media so everybody got to see. But, we just thank you guys very much for participating in that, not that we intentionally lost the sign or anything, but it was a cool means of getting a lot of the community together and stepping up and kind of going on a hunt for the sign, and then you guys making us a new one, so we appreciate that. As you guys have heard, we obviously have a lot happening in downtown, and if you want to get involved on any level, volunteering, sponsoring, tickets to an event, or just find out more information on what's happening in downtown, visit us at downtownbatavia.com. We have a weekly e-news that you can sign up for, follow us on Facebook, and you can give us a call at (630) 761-3528. And I'd briefly like to introduce Jaime Gutierrez of Water Street Studios, because he has an exciting update he'd like to share with you guys, so thank you.
Jaime, can I ask one question? Are you cutting off ticket sales for cocktails?
Friday at midnight, so you're good to buy them until Friday, and then obviously you can buy them at the door.
Oh, so that's what I mean.
Yeah, if we hit the, if we hit 500.
If you tell them to show up.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll let you know if we go over 500, then we'll cut it off, but no, you're good.
Jaime, did you mention a new petticoat?
Oh, thank you. Also, just really quick, in case there's anybody watching this on BA TV, we came across a cockatiel in downtown Batavia today. He was sitting on the window ledge at Fawn Gifts, contacted Bird is the Word, and it was not theirs. We were thinking maybe he snuck out of their location, but they did generously donate a cage for him and some food and stuff, so we now have a office meet in the Batavia Main Street office until his real mom and dad call us at (630) 761-3528 as soon as possible. I love birds. He's super sweet, and it is a male cockatiel, that's what the woman told me, so if you're sitting at home and you realize that Jared got lost, give us a call.
Thank you, Jaime. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Jaime Gutierrez. I am the Events and Facilities Manager at Water Street Studios. This is the first time that I've spoken before the city council, but it may not be the first time that you've heard or read my name. For the past two and a half years, I have been the one signing and submitting the applications for all of our Class F liquor licenses for our special events, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody here on the council and also with the Batavia Police Department for working with us on all of our special events. We rely very much on these events not only to raise funds for our nonprofit organization, but also to bring in lots of new people throughout Batavia and beyond, so just thanks a lot for helping us out with those. We do several events each month, as Jaime mentioned, Second Fridays, we have a new exhibition at Water Street, and we throw a party with food and music and beverages. We also do what we call the Live Art Series, which is every fourth Friday of the month, and that is when we bring in performances of all kinds. We've had music, we've had theater, storytelling, dance, film, so even though Water Street is primarily a visual arts space, we try to include all different types of art forms. And we even have a group called the Waterline Writers. They come in every third Sunday, starting in September, and so there are authors and poets who do readings in our space. But, the main reason why we wanted to come this evening was to announce something that we are very proud of. Ever since our executive director Danielle Howes started a couple years ago, one of her main goals was to make Water Street Studios accessible to everybody. And thanks to a very generous grant from the Community Foundation of the Fox River Valley and also individual donors, we have been able to purchase a wheelchair lift, and that is going to be installed here over the next few weeks, and the ribbon cutting for the wheelchair lift is planned for the next Second Fridays, which is August 11th. And also thanks to city of Batavia for working with us as far as code and things like that, so I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions?
All right.
We appreciate all the good efforts and all the good work that, and all the talent that's being displayed at Water Street. It certainly helps bring a very favorable air to our downtown by having you there and all the good things you're doing.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're proud to serve the community, and we're looking forward to seeing each and every one of you at Water Street Studios.
Thank you. Okay, then we move to item number 11. I put out a memo to all of you that I, we have two vacancies on the Batavia Environmental Commission, and I would like to nominate Emma Cole and Anna Baker as the two new appointees, and I'd ask for a motion of confirmation.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Sorry, who were those motions?
Moved by Alderman, moved, second by Alderman Rosado.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Thank you very much. Moving to item number 12, which is approval of waiver of formal bidding for the funding of telemetry and communications equipment at the McKee Street Electrical Substation. Alderman?
Chanset's going to do it this time.
Chanset?
We already approved the budget amendment in the consent agenda. This is regarding the McKee Substation. It was already scheduled for improvements in 2018, but there was a fault earlier this year, so the equipment there does need to be replaced in order to keep communications together. So, we do need to first waive formal bidding, and then I would make a motion to authorize us to spend the money that we approved in the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I will make a motion then to waive formal bidding for funding of telemetry and communications equipment at the McKee Substation.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman O'Brien, that we waive formal bidding on telemetry and communications equipment at the McKee Street Substation. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. And then, I guess we would go to 13, and that will get your job done for you. Am I correct in that?
Indeed, so move.
Okay, wait, let me read it so we all. Item 13, which is Resolution 17-85-R authorizing Task II with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories in the amount of $176,250 for the funding of telemetry and communications equipment at the McKee Street Substation. Now, Alderman Chanset.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the motion for the McKee Street Substation work. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. And then, I guess we would go to 13, and that will get your job done for you. Am I correct in that?
Indeed, so move.
Okay, wait, let me read it so we all. Item 13, which is Resolution 17-85-R authorizing Task II with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories in the amount of $176,250 for the funding of telemetry and communications equipment at the McKee Street Substation. Now, Alderman Chanset.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of Ordinance 17-49, the variance is for 424 Park Street. Any discussion?
Just one more. Your Honor, we asked for this to be put on the regular agenda tonight, just so that we could kind of get it out there in the public again, because there's always some good value into what we're seeing here with this variance. These individuals, the owners of this property, have been trying to get into position, it sounded like for quite some time, where they could make this investment, and as you yourself have talked quite often about the older stock of homes in town that have been improved upon, this is just one more of those homes that is being improved upon. And I kind of think maybe we overlooked in the consent agenda, the grant of the award, for the grant for the home up on the corner of Batavia Avenue on Wilson Street, that also is, that the grant that we awarded tonight was a $5,000 grant, but there's over $40,000 with the work that that property owner's investing on that property, too. So just wanted to get that out there, that, you know, people are making investments in their property in town, and it's good to see.
Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank them for doing what they're doing to their house. As they reminded me before the meeting, what we're approving is for them to be able to make their home better. And so we do appreciate you doing that for your house. Thank you.
Well, I have a lot of personal ownership on that street up there. My grandparents lived right around the corner from this, and Louise White, who was down on the corner at Washington and Columbia, she was my cousin. I'm her last living relative in the City of Batavia. So I am very pleased to see the old family neighborhood being upgraded so grandly, and I really commend these folks for doing this. And hopefully, this is kind of a continuation of a budding trend that's appearing in Batavia, where we're taking older homes. And certainly Alderman Stark and her husband, that's another one of my old family homes, they've done an absolutely fantastic job on that. So we've had quite a bit of restoration and renovation in that part of town, and it just looks better all the time. And I have comments from people regularly about how nice the older housing stock in this town is really taking on a look. So appreciate what they're doing. Nothing else? I'd ask the court to call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no no's, two absent. Thank you. Moving to item number 15, which is ordinance 17-50, amending the text of the zoning code schools in Old District. Vanguard Gift Academy. Alderman Brown, do you have this one?
Again, I'll defer to Alderman Stark.
It's loading. Okay, so this is for an ordinance to amend the zoning code at 1078 East Wilson Street, which was formerly a bank, and now if we approve these changes, will become the Vanguard Gifted Academy. And because it was a bank, it was zoned for office space. And so this changing the zoning requires that it come before our Zoning Board of Appeal to make sure certain conditions are met, so that it can move forward to change the zoning to a conditional use zoning for that piece of property. So it came in front of the Committee of the Whole, and it was recommended that we move this on to City Council for approval of changing of the zoning. And it also has gone through a public hearing process, and there's been an administrative design review. So the staff has done their due diligence. And just a little bit more information about Vanguard, it's a K through 8 school with hours of operation from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Drop off times would typically be 7:15 a.m. to 8:45, and pickup typically from 3:00 to 4:30. It will be about 20 students to start out with, and it met all of the criteria set before it. So with that said, I would recommend, or I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 17-50, amending the zoning code.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Brown, for the approval of ordinance 17-50, amending the text of the zoning code, schools in Old Districts for the Vanguard Gift Academy. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I need to abstain from the vote, because they're a client of mine.
Okay. Mr. Buneen, do you want to say something?
I'm for the next.
Oh, okay. Do you have any other discussion on this? Kirk, call the roll then, please, on ordinance 17-50.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Ordinance 17-50 is approved. Twelve yes, no no's, two absent.
Eleven.
Oh, excuse me, one abstention, one abstention. So clear majority, so thank you. All right, moving to 16, which is ordinance 17-51, granting a conditional use for a school, public or private, in an office district. Mr. Buneen.
Go ahead, I'll just.
Okay.
Sorry, Alderman Stark.
One of the two of us, so take this. So ordinance 17-51 did have some discussion around it. There were a few conditions that came before the City Council in the original proposal, one that there would be no pre-K allowed. And so that was one of the conditions that the majority of the City Council felt didn't need to be spelled out in this. And then the second that was a condition of changing the zoning was that the area would be landscaped and fenced. And I brought this up at City Council, and unless we amend the ordinance, I'll be voting against this again, not because I don't think this is a good use, having Vanguard Academy there, but I'm still not in support of a three-foot fence that only borders the Wilson Street side of the property, primarily because it has retention pond. And if we're worried about the kids running out into the street, we should be just as worried about them running into the retention pond. So that said, I don't know, Scott, what you have to add.
Just one small thing. With the fence, then the condition that was in there, there was some concern about the fact that they have to do some grading and put the fence in if the condition remains. And they didn't want to put the fence in before the grading is done, because then they might have to move it, or the grade may not match with their proposing. So we did amend that condition on that ordinance to say that they have to put the fence in after, or that they cannot occupy that area until after the fence is in, and that would be done after the grading is done. So they would do the grading, the fence, and then they could use the green space area. That's how we've amended the condition.
And Scott, further to my comments, one of the things, you know, and I understand that we're trying to make it look more appealing and et cetera, but fences are known for collecting trash and debris, and that's another thing that makes me say a three-foot fence is not, you know, it's, if it were, if they had to completely surround the property to keep the kids in, I would totally understand. But a fence that just faces Wilson Street still makes absolutely no sense. And it's, to me, it seems like it's a condition we're putting on the applicant that doesn't necessarily have to be there. So that said, Marty?
I just had a, for a clarification, we were saying not necessarily that after the work, the grading, thank you, the grading was done, but the red line in here is that it was prior to use as an outdoor play area.
Yes.
How is that actually being defined? Because I was under the understanding that they were not putting in playground with playground equipment. So what is the definition in this scenario of an outdoor play area as far as future reference as to how we're going to define that, if there's no playground equipment? And the use, from my recollection, was going to be an outdoor education area.
Right. And it's, play areas, you know, we're not defining this as a playground or anything like that. It's just, you know, it's an open space area that's going to be used for, you know, recess or educational purposes or whatever. So before they actually use that, if the condition remains, then, you know, they would just have to get the grading and the fencing done before they actually use that area. That's all that was intended to be.
Other discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
So I'm confused. There's going to be a fence along Wilson Street, and there will be a fence running perpendicular to that fence to obstruct. There will not be.
Just a fence and then the landscaping along Wilson Street.
And that's it. And nothing to keep, like Susan says, children from going into the pond.
That was the way the condition was recommended by the Plan Commission, correct?
To leave it open.
Alderman Brown?
I think, as I recall, the petitioner, which they're here tonight, said that they, you know, it's kind of being called a play area, but their intent is to use it as a play area. It's more of a outside, I'm not sure how to define it again, learning area, where it just gives them the opportunity to take the kids outside and talk about things out there. It's not going to, they're not going to be putting playground equipment up. They're not going to be kicking the soccer ball around or anything like that. Alderman Stark talked to me just prior to the meeting, and I think, Alderman, correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, but I think your concern is that we're not being consistent with what we're doing. And even though I agree and understand that in a conditional use, we can kind of put any condition down we want, there should be some consistency to it. And if the concern is that kids, if the concern of putting a fence up, the need for putting a fence up is to keep kids away from the danger of the street, then there should be a concern of protecting them from the pond to the west, or maybe even wandering off to the south. So I think it gets really into a fuzzy line here of what the use is going to be. If it's going to be used as a play area where they're kicking the ball around and what have you, or if it's going to be used as an area where the teacher goes out and they congregate around in an area where they maybe read a story of a book or something, that's a whole different scenario, I think, than what would be called a quote-unquote "play area." So I think, you know, if there's a way that we could quantify what a play area is, I would be supportive of actually eliminating the fence requirement altogether. But if it's going to be used as an area where the kids are going to be running around, kicking the ball, you know, we all know how kids are. They take off and they run. Then if that's what they're going to do, then it should be fenced in entirely. So I don't know, Scott, if we can quantify more so what this play area is.
Yeah, the applicant is here, and she can certainly explain a little bit better than I can as to, you know, their intended use of the area.
Could you come up, please, and use the podium?
Hello. We're real excited about this open space. And for us, the open space is an active area of educational engagement. But that will include kickball. That will include Revolutionary War reenactments. That will include making the road, Roman Road. It will include a lot of educational things, but it will not exclude physical activity. It will always include supervision by teachers. It will not include supervision by outside people, by parents, by anybody else. It will always include supervision by teachers. And I think that's, that's the strongest supervision that I can offer. I'm being entrusted with other people's children, and believe me, that's a huge responsibility that I take very seriously, and that those children will always be well-supervised. The plantings that we put in there were to maintain the dignity of the property so that it looked really nice, but that was also to put a border around so children would know where their area for outside activity was. Like I say, a huge responsibility that I take very seriously is guarding our children, the Vanguard Gifted Academy children. And that will be done very personally by me and the faculty of this school.
The other thing I, the other thing I would add is that a lot of the images in my mind about kids running around playing kickball, things going all kinds of chaotic directions, includes more like hundreds of students out there on the same place at the same time. But we are only starting with 20, and our model calls for maybe adding five every year with an additional teacher as we go. And all that playground time, even when it's more athletic play, is also coaching time on our part to help support their social emotional growth in terms of negotiating skills and putting out, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of, but negotiating skills.
Learning to organize.
Organizing.
Learning how do you coordinate your peers to do an activity? How do you establish rules?
Multi-age shoes.
How do you do those things? Children don't get an opportunity to do that anymore. They go to so many prepared sports, so many prepared activities, where they do not learn the leadership and cooperative skills. So we will be out there to teach that as they're playing kickball, as they're coordinating activities. That's what that property is for.
Thanks.
Could you tell me what the ratio would be from students outside, students to teachers?
To start with, there'll be three faculty and 20 students. That ratio will stay about 10 to 1.
Alderman Callahan?
The facility is insured, correct? Did your insurer give you any conditions for insurability as to any requirements as to what they wanted for extending their coverage? Thank you.
Alderman Brown?
Final comment. Thank you for your honesty. Because the way I phrased that question, you could have got up there very easily and said, no, we're just going to go out and sit around in a circle and read a book. So thank you for that. And obviously, you people know what you're doing, and you're the professionals. So I'm going to assume that if in the future you see the need to completely fence it, and you will.
Yes, sir. Yes.
You know, knowing this location, I would just offer up in my own perspective here, there's a rock right across the street from this church, there on the sidewalk, that says that someplace right there is where Christopher Payne built the first cabin in Kane County. So the first building in Kane County was, now, you have to appreciate in 1833, when Mr. Payne came in here to do this, there was no Wilson Street there. There may have been some kind of a path or trail by Indians or animals or something, but, so we're not really sure where Payne's cabin was out there, quite honestly. It was someplace in that stretch right there, within 100 feet of probably that stone. And so I guess, as far as I'm concerned, it's kind of a countywide historical monument area, and I don't know if putting another fence across the street adds to it. It just kind of clutters it up, in my personal opinion. I think we should probably let it go without the fence, but that would be my own idea. So we have a motion and second on the floor?
No, I don't think we've made a motion.
Oh, you haven't made it? Okay, make it.
So.
Well, can I ask?
Sure.
Based on the mayor's comment there, and since we have these young ladies up here, do you feel as though the fence running parallel with Wilson Street is something that, I mean, obviously, it came out of Plan Commission, as their recommendation, and you agreed to do it. So do you think it's a good idea for the safety of the children, or would you like, do you think it's not necessary at this time?
At this time, my honest opinion would be with, starting with 20 children and three teachers, the expense is prohibitive. But we were willing to go, to secure the fence in order to make the committee feel very comfortable about our taking accountability and responsibility for the children. At this time, I don't think the fence is necessary.
And we do know all of our incoming students right now pretty intimately, because they came over from Da Vinci Academy, which was a school that closed. And a large reason why we are starting a new school for gifted in the first place is to continue to serve those students. And we know them well as, as students of good character, and in terms of the relationship that they develop with their supervising teachers. There's a confidence there, just based on the family qualities that are coming our way, too, in the beginning here. But like you said, if we grow bigger, and we grow in our concerns about the space being not kind of contained enough, then that's a choice we would make automatically for ourselves and our safety of our students.
You know, one has to do, Your Honor, is kind of wander around and look at the other schools we have in the community. And, you know, I drive by them quite often, but I can't recall ever seeing a fence in an area that they contain the kids in.
I would say that there are a number of preschools, and maybe even Montessori. I think, I'm pretty sure Montessori has a fence. The public school property is much larger, so the setback line is very different. That would be my only concern. I don't think it's quite the same sort of property.
The setback is significant, though, because there's the parkway, there's the sidewalk, and then there's another 20 feet where our plantings are going to be before you're going to get to children. So there is, there is, I feel like, a significant setback. Pardon?
So an approximate total of 30 feet?
So I think it's more like 40 feet, all told. So we're not, you know, we're not like right on the parkway. I understand the concern, and I am still willing to put up a fence if you all feel that that's the safest thing for these children. I'm willing to do that.
And this is not a preschool, correct?
This is not a preschool.
Alderman Chantet?
So you're starting out with 20 students, but in committee, you had remarked that it could, your model would support up to 100 students.
Right. I don't know if, I don't know if that location would support up to 100 students.
That's, that's my question, then, is would your answer be different today on the necessity of a fence if you had full enrollment?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, very likely.
Alderman Rosado, you wanted to?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think fence, we don't require the schools to have a fence. We don't require parks to have a fence around the ponds, and there's plenty of parks around that have ponds in them. With no supervision.
I was going to comment on the distances. I mean, I think back to when the junior high was actually right at the corner of Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street, we had an outdoor area that was basically a blacktop area, but that was almost to the sidewalk, and that was fenced in. And I think that was somewhat because you had truck traffic and everything else on 31, right up alongside that area. This, to me, has such a buffer from Wilson Street back to where they would be at. I don't see a need for it.
Could I just ask one more question? Da Vinci Academy up in Elgin?
Correct.
Right off of Randall?
Yes. Perhaps. They closed their doors this year.
And no fence, right off of Randall?
They weren't on Randall.
They were in the middle of a cornfield. Literally, they had cornfield on all three sides.
Okay.
So it's not a fair comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask the city attorney a question. If the council rejects this conditional use for a school without the fence, what does that do? We're not prohibiting the school, are we? We're just prohibiting the fence? I mean, the way I'm reading the agenda here, it says grant of conditional use for a school. I mean, the way I'm reading the agenda here, it says grant of conditional use for a school public in, in the district.
It would depend upon what the conditional use they approve says. If they amend the current ordinance, I think that which requires fans to remove that and approve the conditional use...
That's what I'm thinking we should, we'd have to have a vote to amend the ordinance.
Right, just to drop that condition.
Drop that condition, because I don't wanna end up passing or having this voted down, and then you got the school in limbo here.
No, just need to amend the ordinance.
You could just strike that condition from the ordinance.
Yeah, we drop that condition.
Well, I think we need to do that as an amendment before we vote on the ordinance. Would you agree with that?
You could do that, yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion to amend the ordinance to remove the fence as a conditional use?
I move amending ordinance 17-51, removing item number 10 regarding the fence.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of an ordinance amendment to remove the fence, which is condition number 10 in ordinance 1751. Any discussion on that? Alderman?
I would need to abstain.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll call the roll then on the amendment.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
So, that vote was 11 yes, 1 no, and...
Sorry, 1 abstention.
1 abstention. All right, so we have amended the ordinance. So, now you, Alderman Stark, you wanna make a motion?
I do. And before I make the motion, I do wanna say, for anyone who may be listening and wondering what this means in terms of tax tolls and things like that, it will be, this will be a school, and the petitioner is going to pay the Batavia School District and the City of Batavia for a fee in lieu of real estate taxes. So, we will be getting money for the property, even though it will be a fish, it is a school, and therefore, it is outside of taxing. So, but they are paying a fee in lieu of taxes. And then, they will also be, if anyone is curious about the detention pond, it is going to be restored to the approved Johnson Woods Native Landscape Plan by May 31 of 2019. So, those were just two of the conditions that I thought are worth calling out so people know a little bit more about what's going on. So, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1751, approving a conditional use for a school, public or private, 1078 East Wilson Street, as amended.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of ordinance 1751 as amended. Any discussion?
I would need to abstain again.
Another abstention.
Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Ordinance 17-51 as amended is approved by a vote of 11 yes, 1 abstention.
So, welcome to Batavia.
Thank you for your close attention to...
Okay, moving to 17, the administrator's report.
Okay, good evening. Just wanted to make sure to encourage all our residents to sign up for e-news and notify me. You can do that right on the homepage of our website, and that way you receive either email notifications or text notifications. There's a whole laundry list of things that you can choose to be notified of. I also wanna let you know of the upcoming brush collection. The west side is being collected this week, and you should've had your items to the curb by 7:00 a.m. this morning. The next brush pickups for the east side will be August 14th, the week of August 14th, and the week of August 21st. I also wanted to provide some updates on some ongoing projects that we have. One of them is our beautiful downtown artwork. Nicole Beck's winning submission for the Donovan Bridge sculpture dedicated to the theme of art was installed on Friday, July 7th, and it's getting rave reviews online. A formal unveiling will be planned in the future. Bill McGrath is gonna be meeting with the Science Sculptor, and the city expects to schedule an installation here in the next couple of weeks. Store hinged, the metal plate for that was dry-fit into the ironworks this past week and has now been sent off to the printer for the engraving. So, it might be that we can have one celebration to celebrate the fact that we've got three new beautiful pieces of art decorating our downtown. The city electric utility is working with the Batavia Park District. They're designing improvements to the electric that is available in this public lot that's directly across from City Hall. This will allow more ease of use for festivals and goings-on in this area for those who need electric, like food trucks or people who have a P.A. system. They don't necessarily have to use what's available in Peg Bond. But we're also gonna be exploring the opportunity, charging stations for electric vehicles in that area as well. The city has also conducted a pre-construction conference concerning, I should say, pre-demolition conference concerning the Plan 206 East Wilson Gas Station. We've been waiting a long time for that to come down, but the, one of the things the developer asked was if they would be able to leave that as a gravel lot, and we told them, no. Similar to the Siemens property, we are going to require them to top soil and seed that property, so it will look like a grassy space there on Wilson Street. The new perch that was put in for the cormorants is looking like a success. I think I once saw three sitting in the perch at the same time. You know, at first, we just had one guy who was brave enough to go over there, and I was afraid he claimed it all for his own, but he apparently is letting a few more buddies over there. So, as we see this transition happen, we will then take down that rotting tree that is next to it. Also, staff met with TESCA and Associates. They're an urban planning consulting firm with vast experience in working for King County and all of its communities, including Batavia. And we expect to receive a proposal to conduct a planning workshop. It's called a shorette and report with respect to long-range plans for the North River Street area, the former Larson Becker properties. Also, Spark Inc., the city's branding consultant, has presented us with materials and concepts for our new brand architecture and tagline, and they will be working on a presentation probably somewhere between four to six weeks. We will present that to city council, along with several ideas for ways in which that branding concept can be implemented. Batavia Industrial Warehousing Building and Occupancy Activity has been recognized in June 2017, Northern Illinois Real Estate Magazine. In addition, the article points out the positive aspects of the city's municipally-owned operated sewer, water, and electric utilities. The staff is currently reviewing an application for zoning change for the property that was formerly city-owned at the corner of Wilson and Spuyler. The city sale of this property is contingent upon zoning approval. The plans currently depict six single-family units. Also, the representatives for the national retailer Sierra Trading Post have submitted formal application for an administrative design review, and the first public informal effort in obtaining approvals for the occupancy of approximately 18,000 square feet of the former 33,000-square-foot Circuit City, store space that's on Randall and Fabian Parkway. And according to the ownership, a first-quarter 2018 store opening is planned. And then finally, the Batavia Police and Fire Departments will participate with the Geneva Police and Fire Departments, who will be conducting an active shooter response training from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, July 20th, at the Heartland Elementary School at 3,300 Heartland Drive in Geneva. The public should avoid that school grounds until the training exercise is complete and all emergency vehicles have left the area. But it's obviously a very important thing for our communities to be ready for, and I think it's great that neighboring communities are participating with one another and shared learning experience. And that's my report for this evening, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Questions, Alora?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the good report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to 18, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Just a few meetings to announce, Your Honor. Tomorrow evening's council meeting will start at 7:30. There's a few items on the agenda that others will present. The next Plan Commission meeting is July 19th. That's this coming Wednesday. That starts at 7:00 p.m. And there's a couple items on that agenda. One is the building addition at 260 through 280 on Bellevue Lane. There's a design review for that. And then, the historic preservation is scheduled for July 24th. It's a Monday at 5:30. And then, the next committee of the whole meeting will be that Tuesday, July 25th, at 7:30. So, I have...
Okay, Government Services, Alderman...
Attack?
It looks as though the only thing that Government Services will be talking about tomorrow night are May financials on the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's it.
Alderman Wolf, do you have anything under City Services?
I believe we'll be talking about the surplus property tomorrow. Scott needs memo.
Okay.
That's it.
Alderman O'Brien, do you have anything under...
I believe tomorrow night, Your Honor, we'll be talking about the wastewater treatment. It'll just be an update on the construction process.
Okay. All right, do we have anybody else in the council of other business? Alderman and Callahan?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the chief and his staff. There was an article today about several police departments are pulling their Ford Explorers, their expeditions, due to carbon monoxide issues with officers passing out for, it's an officer safety issue, and the chief was already aware of it, and he proactively has been out there checking and being informed about this issue, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Under 20, the mayor's report, I just wanna take a minute to call your attention to a couple of things. Number one, as you may remember, last year, we got into conversations with our Public Works Department about the need to burn off some of these large, I'll call them, green areas we have in town, the Brayburn Marsh out at Fabian and Randall being one of them. And with the cooperation that we received from the county and our own Public Works Department, last October and early November, we were able to burn most of that marsh out and take it right down to the bare ground. And I invite you, the next time you're driving down Randall Road or Fabian Parkway, with all the rain we've had in the last several months here, take a look at what Brayburn Marsh looks like already again. I mean, some of those weeds are eight, nine feet tall out there. So, I don't know, you know, when we did this thing, it was all gonna be an idea, we were gonna have this unique body of water that was gonna be easily visible for people on Randall Road to see and enjoy. And in concept, it was a great idea, but I'm not sure it's a success, because, you know, now you can't even hardly see the thing, and the growth of it is already astronomical, in my opinion. And I know the fire department has some concerns, and I share them, that, you know, we've gotta keep burning that thing, because if we let it get into a dry state out there, some night that, that baby catches on fire and kicks off, and you're gonna have one spectacular scene out there for a few minutes. And hopefully, it doesn't get into all those houses to the east and the south that border it. And so, that's, that's almost a threat. So, just, next time you're driving by it, take a good look at what that is becoming out there, because it is becoming another over, heavily overgrown idea. The other thing I just wanna make a mention is the liquor commissioner. We've got a couple of our licenses now that are temporary, not in use, because the occupants have gone out of business, or they're having a disagreement over terms or something. And so, everybody has just kinda walked away from a couple of these locations, and as, as the liquor commissioner, I know I shouldn't be, but I am, I go by these locations today, and I see all these weeds growing up by the front doors and through the, by the windows and in the parking lots. And I gotta just put the word out that I'm not gonna be real receptive to somebody coming in and telling me they wanna reopen some of these places that used to have a liquor license and now don't, based on some of the maintenance I'm seeing by the property owners. And hopefully, that word can spread, but I, it is not a good operation in Batavia here with the way a couple, and I'm not gonna name specific names. You can ride around downtown and probably figure out very quickly what I'm talking about. But there's a couple. I was out today with my camera, taking some pictures, so I'd have a memorial setting of what some of this looks like. And I think overall, our town looks really great, and I give a lot of credit to our own Public Works Department with the hanging baskets and all the work that they're doing, and certainly bring in the Park District for credit for this, and the school community and others. There's a lot of private citizens doing a lot of stuff, picking a lot of weeds, picking up trash, cleaning things, doing a lot of neat stuff. And at the end of the day, I guess what I get stroked from a positive perspective about is, is that this, for whatever reason, there's been a lot of reasons why people who used to live in Batavia have come back here in the last few weeks. This thing last week, when we had that honor to Craig Sager, that brought back a few longtime Batavians who have been gone for 20, 30, 50 years. We've had several high school class reunions already take place. There's more to come. And inevitably, I go downtown, or somebody shows up at the office here, and everybody is just giving compliment after compliment about how neat Batavia looks in comparison to what they remember it looked like 50 years ago when they left here, that we've really done some wondrous things. I think, I'm sure I told you all that one came in and said, "When I left here, this area specifically where we are, it looked like a dump, and now you've turned it into a beautiful garden." And so, I mean, we get really strong, positive reaction when we do it. The most recent change over here at Larson and Becker, I mean, there's some people that didn't like we cut all the trees down, but the vast majority is, it's about 80, 90 percent are telling me they really like how we've cleaned that area up and how that really features the beauty of the Fox River and the downtown. So, I mean, I think some of the stuff we've done here does get some credit for really being a positive spin on what this town can be. And as Jamie just earlier reported, you know, this coming Saturday night, we're gonna have the party in the park and the dinner down the middle of South, or North River Street. There's a lot of neat things that are gonna, going to continue to bring people into the downtown. I know the Chamber and Main Street have already got a pretty good agenda coming up for Labor Day weekend, and then the first weekend in October with the Oktoberfest. So, there's more to come, and we continue to have thousands of people wanting to come into this downtown. And this past weekend, with this great success that we experienced at Windmill City Days, I think anybody that was involved in the North River Street project, and there's a number sitting here who were, you really should feel a good pat on the back here about what has been done over there, because there certainly are literally thousands of people using it, probably on a weekly basis if you count in the farmer's market on Saturday morning. And these are all things that somebody that grew up here 50 years ago, they never saw any of this taking place in Batavia, and they come back here today and see it all, and they're starry-eyed when they come out of here.